Good afternoon. We're going to call this meeting in order to ask Pastor here on the Calvary Bouncy Church to give us our prayer. Be followed by a prayer.
Let's bow for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we acknowledge today that you alone are holy and righteous and just. Or I just pray for our meeting today, for our city, that you would give the mayor and councilman and all of us as citizens your wisdom that is peaceable and pure and full of mercy and without hypocrisy and without partiality. God, we just pray that you be in control of all that goes on. And we ask, Father, that you would build a hedge of protection around our city, that you would bring peace and agreement and that you'd help us to be a healthy city for your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Remain standing. Is Mr. Five Ash here? Or is Mr. Chrome or Mr. four?
Let's place the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor McClinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Halden.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam.
Here.
Counselor Robinson, present, and Counselor Willis.
Here.
We have a full Council President, Governor Corn. Last week we didn't approve the community development roofing project. Do we need to add that? With all this, do we going to add from the whole agenda?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor. It's the last meeting. There were a couple items that were on the agenda that did not get completed. I'd like to ask that we add those back to the agenda. Specifically, it would have been this situation, R1, excuse me.
And the community development.
On the commission request, where the mayor signed the contract. We changed the name and made the amendment, but we never had a motion to actually approve you paying that $202,000. So I just wanted to go back in there and take care of that.
What about that community development roof project?
The... Roberta Jackson?
No.
The two bids, they're back on the agenda now.
They're on the old last week. It's the community development.
Right.
We add that.
Yes.
That's a motion. You guys get a second?
Second.
All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? You guys smile. So, I get a motion in second as amended to approve the bid opening. Send them back to their...
Second.
End discussion? All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Well, we'll refer those back to...
If I may, while we're here, ask the Fire Commission meet immediately after today's meeting.
What committee?
Fire Commission.
All right. The presentations, we got some, but what we're going to do, we're going to wait until the next council meeting. We're going to award some very special individuals. Roy Davis, Brian Benninger with the Westminster Police Department, Anthony Miller, Steve Welch, and Josh Bell at the Westminster Fire Department. And we get to them in our next council meeting. I get the motion in second to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
There were, like I say, a couple corrections from the old minutes. When we started into new business, there was not a motion to retitle only, but we've added those back onto the agenda, so they'll get taken care of. And then we just recently added this back on, so that should take care of everything.
All the favor by? Oppose? The minutes pass. Old business. Mr. City Clerk.
This is the third reading. An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 825 North College Boulevard permitting a communications tower in a R1 single family residential district.
Could we get a motion in second?
Motion.
Second. All the favor by? It's on the third reading.
Well, this is our... Oh, this is second reading.
Yeah, second.
Third reading. An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 825 North College Boulevard permitting a communications tower in a R1 single family residential district.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
End of discussion? All the favor by? Oppose? Let me do that again. All the favor by? Oppose? All right, well, Mr. City Clerk, can you get that ordinance a number?
That ordinance's number will be 2511.
Mayor, I'd just like to clarify that the original motion in second was suspended rules based on the third reading, just for clarification purposes.
All right. New business.
May I make a motion to read R1, 01 through 5, back high on?
Then...
Okay. Okay. I second the motion.
All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose?
And I make a motion to read R2 to the agenda.
Okay. Second. All the favor by?
Aye.
Mr. City Clerk, will you please read? Well, no, no, no. Yeah, all one.
A resolution approving a revision to the 2019 budget.
All the favor by?
Aye.
No.
Hold on, hold on. Can I get a motion? Let me hold, sorry. Let me... I got a little anxious. I'm getting a motion in a second to approve that.
So moved.
Second. End of discussion?
May I make a motion that we amend R1 to read the Fire Department paramedics to 9.5%? All officers above captain and above 5% and all other officers in police 7.5.
Of course, I'm going to have to... Well, let's see if there's a second first, then it's up for discussion.
I second that motion.
Okay. Can you please explain to the members of the council exactly how those numbers relate to the numbers that have been presented today? The actual dollar value?
For the dollar value?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, that's my motion changing. I mean, you're only changing it like from five, I think you had two of them at seven and two at 2.3. So it's not, the budget's not going to change that much.
No, no. Well, like I say, just for clarification purposes, do you want HR to answer that question real quick?
Well, HR can.
Okay. Please. If you would explain in this proposal, the salary increase level in relation to what Mr. Pulliam is asking to amend, please. And I don't know if you have your...
I know that what you're proposing is different than what's proposed today, so you were... I'm actually asking you, like, it's 9.5% is what you're saying?
Excuse me?
I said, what you're proposing is...
The 9.5 is for the paramedics.
Okay. Because we proposed 9% for the paramedics.
That's what I... Again, going back memory, I had a sheet in front of me, so...
Well, I'll change that, okay, because he the one gave me the number.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay, no problem.
Well, I'm going to amend that because he the one gave me the number.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, 9% for the paramedic.
Which is already in the proposal that you had in front of you.
And 7.5 for all the other officer below captain.
Okay. In relation to that statement, as far as officers below captain, you were... The original proposal is, current proposal is what?
The original proposal, if I'm not mistaken, for captains and above, I believe is 5%, if I'm not mistaken.
That's my proposal.
Okay. So we're all on same page there?
Yes.
Okay. And is it? Okay.
That was not in the proposal that I had, because you had some 2.7.
Of course, and three. Well, we...
So that's me not amended to 5%.
Yeah. But this is reflective of the question at hand now.
Right.
Okay. So this is the current proposal. Okay. Does not need to be amended?
No, not that I see.
It matches up to your request?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there are any discrepancies, we can adjust that with the proposal that we presented.
So everybody, captain and above 5%?
That's correct.
And, well, I said 9.5, but I got that answer from you.
Now, as far as the chief, you know, we had a certain number for the chiefs for...
Well, that's my proposal from captain and above 5%. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Which is in this current proposal.
Thank you.
There's no reason to amend. If I may, Mr. Martin, address this real quick.
Are you including the chief and assistant chief on that as well?
The chief and assistant chief, everybody, captain and above.
That's not in this group.
That is not in this proposal, you're correct.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's my amendment to that.
Now, is that for, is that for the police and fire departments?
Police and fire. Whatever rank, that equals up, because we've already did it on, we always have done it on parity pack. So whatever the captain and above equals to that, then they get the 5% raise as well.
So the 9%?
So you put that out for a motion?
Let me add this. I want to be clear, the farming side was 7.5%.
That's correct.
Yeah. To keep everything in parity, let me, let me bring something to you all. You remember when I first appointed Chief Rose, one thing that he wanted to do and make sure that we was parity with the police assistant chief and the forest assistant chief, and these races, make sure they want to go up significant, and it's in parity. Okay, that's 7.5. Yeah, 7.5 for the fire department, for the farming under the police department. We on point there. Yeah.
Mayor, so are we... Mayor?
Well, I mean, again, that's amendment to it, so all we need is, I make a motion.
I just want to make sure that we're in line with this proposal today. The only amendment that needs to be made, then, is increasing the chief and assistant chief in both fire and police from 3% to 5%. Because that's three is what's in there.
Captain and above 5%.
They're already in here. That's done. Now we're dealing with just four positions. The two chiefs and the two assistants. Okay. You want to increase them from 3% to 5%?
5%.
3% is in this proposal.
Okay.
Let me add, Mr. Paul, you do understand, if we go down to five, you taking away from the 7.5.
Taking away from which 7.5?
No, no, no. The chief... Are you talking about the chief? I said from captain and above. What, the captain and above, what? Okay, you're correct. Above.
Now, are we back talking about just the police department?
Police and fire. Whatever the rank, because rank is paired on both sides.
I know, but I mean, I thought, I just heard that the fire department got 7.5.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't what the level that he's talking about.
The lower ranking got 7.5.
Right, right, right. But I'm talking about from the captain up.
Yeah.
They're getting 5%.
5%.
Because at first, some were getting 2.7, some were getting 3, some were getting 7. So what you're trying to do is put a balance between that top echelon, that they all get 5, and then those that are underneath there, they're getting 7.5. That's what you're saying.
Mayor. Janet, this is all in the package, right? Everything we're talking about is already in the...
We can amend. We can amend. It is. If there, you know, again, if there are any, you know, anything that comes up, you know, we can, you know, make adjustments or whatever. But it's already in the packet that we propose. That's already in the packet that we propose.
Yeah. All I want to do is make sure that what we're presenting today is in line with the amendments that are being proposed.
Yes.
The only thing that has not been addressed, based off of conversation so far, is the chief of both departments and the assistant chief of both departments would be going from 3% was the mayor's proposal.
Okay.
To 5% if approved. Those are the only four positions that are not taken care of in this proposal.
That's correct.
One of those, one of those positions, as far as the assistant chiefs, fire and police, they're going to be coming down a notch, because they were like 7% if I'm remembering correctly.
Assistant chief.
The original proposal.
The original proposal.
Back several meetings ago.
Right. It was 7%. Now they're coming down to 5%.
That number went up now.
Going up to five, because the mayor proposed three.
Yeah. That number for the assistant chief on both departments would have went from 64, then changed to 70,000 even. And then take the chiefs up from right at 81 to 84,000.
Yeah. The parity between the departments exist. That's already taken care of in this proposal. Council just needs to vote on Mr. Pulliam's amendment to increase those four positions from 3% to 5%. Okay.
That sounds more simplistic.
That's correct.
I don't mean, but since it kind of came through budget. That's the proposal. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So can I get a motion in second to approve all one with that amendment?
No, I have, I have an amendment. I have one. In our budget meeting, we discussed the assistant planning director received, not calling names, but he, that that position received $60,000 yearly here on this planet, has 55...
Purchasing?
Purchasing, purchasing.
Purchasing, yeah.
Right, purchasing. So I'm making an amendment to that from 55 to $60,000.
Before, before we do that, can we vote on the First Amendment?
Oh, I thought we done that.
We go to the amendment. We got a motion in second on your amendment.
On the other amendment, okay.
All the favor by? Oppose? So that passes. Now, Mr. Robson, your amendment.
Right. Here I go again. We, in our budget meeting, we proposed that the purchasing agent would receive $60,000 per year from his current 40-something thousand that he's receiving now. On this particular spreadsheet, it's 55,000. And I'm making the motion that we amend that from 55,000 to the 60,000 that we originally proposed in our budget meeting.
I second.
I second it, yeah.
We got a motion in second. End of discussion. I mean, first of all, this is another amendment. Another amendment? Do we have any more discussion? All the favor by? Oppose? All right, Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
So we called the roll on the first amendment?
No, we approved the first in the second. The amendment, it had changed in the budget.
From 55 to 60 that we discussed and agreed upon in the budget meeting.
Yes.
Counselor Kat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
How nine yeses and one no, that amendment passes. No.
If I may, just as a... The vote no was called certifications have not been obtained, and that was part of the original discussion when hired. And so that's just, so everybody will know, it's my vote no. Hadn't received certification, yeah?
If I may add to that, Mr. Kat, after more research, after that particular conversation, our understanding is that that was not a part of the original conversation, that it was talked about.
I'm not privy to that information.
I understand. And so obviously, we've not communicated that. But based on what we did obtain after our meeting, that was discussed, but not necessarily was deemed necessary.
He's taken care of, then?
I appreciate that.
And we move forward.
And I would like to further state, piggybacking on what Councilwoman Hutchinson is saying, we discussed that, and we did state that after certification, we would probably go up $5,000 more dollars for this particular position. That was in discussion.
In 2020.
Perhaps.
Probably just one of the certifications.
God be willing.
It would still be within his, the right age. It would still be within it.
But that would be attached to the actual certification.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Can I get a motion in second to approve all one with both amendments?
Now, one more. We have, this is more discussion. I'm so sorry. I wasn't here the last time you all criticized me. I'm here today, so I'm making up for lost time. I had a doctor's appointment. In the, in our package, it has the mayor's salary. I don't know if we changed that or not. It has a proposal on there for $87,000, but I think we discussed in budget that that was going to be changed to 85.5. Have we taken care of that yet?
We were by revolution.
Yes.
Okay. Is it in here? I didn't see it.
It's, oh, one.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good, I'm good now.
You guys, ready for your race? Let's get a motion in the second with the amendments to approve R1?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
No.
All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? You all get the race. Also, I want to make, I made a promise to you guys, that I want you all to wait to July 1st, and you all stood behind me and supported me, so I'm going to ask this council to give me the motion in second to retroact back to January, July 1st.
If I may, it's already in here.
It's in here, but they need to hear it.
Well, you get in the bag. Ladies and gentlemen. So let me get a resolution number for R1, please.
That will be resolution number 2205.
2205. All right.
Now, don't y'all leave. They can have to go home and shower.
We gotta go to work now.
R2?
R2 is a resolution to adopt the Grow West Memphis 2040 Plan as the West Memphis Comprehensive Plan.
Mayor, make a motion to approve this in the second.
Second.
End of discussion? All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Mr. City Clerk, can I get a number of resolution number for R2?
That will be resolution 2206.
All right.
Oh, one. Is an ordinance making the office of the mayor of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, full-time and establishing a salary for the position therefore and for other purposes.
That's the first reading on that ordinance. We'll be back in the second reading.
Just go ahead and make the amendment now. What? Do you want to go ahead and make the amendment now?
Yeah, I want to make the amendment that, that the salary drops, well, I don't want to say drops, it was adjusted from 87 to 85.
85.5, is that right?
85.5.
Well, we, I said, we're going to make a amendment to adjust the mayor's full-time salary from 87 to 85. Just like the wage package says, and not the ordinance. The ordinance says 87. Wage package says 85.
85.5.
85.
I thought we said 85.5.
It does say 85.5.
85 flat.
Yes, 85 is flat.
It's 85.
Okay. I didn't know. Extra five won't hurt anything, but...
Okay.
Need a, need a motion for that amendment.
Make a motion.
Are we, are we reading it out today, or what are we doing?
No, we're not reading it out.
You just want to go ahead and make the amendment now? Yeah, I'm the first reading.
All right. Ms. Chrome, your way.
Well, I mean, I just want to go ahead and make the motion to amend the...
Do we get a second? All the favor by?
No.
I make the amendment, I want to make an amendment to his amendment.
Ms. Robson?
I make the amendment that we raise it to at least 85.5. I think our Mayor McClintock is doing a really wonderful job. I mean, I didn't have a problem with the 87, and we are bringing it down, and that's beneath what the salaries are for the mayors of cities of this size in the state of Arkansas. I think the, the minimum salary is 86.2. And I think, and we have to keep in mind that we're not giving this to Mayor McClintock per se. It's the position.
Amen.
That we are raising that salary. It's, it's that position that we are raising that salary to. So I would, would love to at least see him have 85.5.
Well, I mean...
Perhaps we can look at it a little bit later.
Councilman Robertson, that's, that's what we're doing with everybody, is with the position. It's not the person, the position. But, but in the wage package, we all agreed to 85, and then the ordinance came out saying 87. We'd already approved the wage package at 85, which is on there now.
That's why we are making the amendments. That's what the amendments are for, to change things.
And to clarify, 85.5 is the midpoint within the study. Just make sure we're all on same page. I thought it was 85.
85.5.
I'm in agreement with you now.
Thanks.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Let's just do 85.5 and get it done.
Second.
You pray about it.
All the favor by?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Will you call the roll?
What are we doing, the 80? On 85 or...
85.5.
Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
No.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
I'll pass on it.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
And Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Can I say that the one thing real quick?
The amendment passed and so it should be on the reading for the second, second reading.
The average for the midpoint is eighty-five, go forty.
Oh, God, please. Y'all would decide somewhere forty dollars. Come on. Please, come on.
This already passed. Let's move on.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I make a motion that we read it for a second time.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion to read second time. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
Oh-one, an ordinance making the office of the mayor of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, full-time and establishing a salary for the position therefore and for other purposes.
It's read for the second time. It'll be back on the agenda. No, that's second reading. Yeah, that's the amendment, okay. Mr. Amendment. Alright, you just read, he just read for the second time.
Read it for the second time.
Yeah. You just read for second.
Did we approve the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then we, we have approved the amendment, so we'll have to double dip and go back over this again in two weeks. We approved the amendments.
Right.
We did that. Then Mr. Holt made a motion that we read it for the second time. The, the ordinance itself approving. Okay, so that's where we are. So that we have to read it one more time. On the second reading.
O-two.
Alright. O-two?
An ordinance to establish new compensation for aldermen of the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
It's been read for the first, no, the second time. Well, it was read the first time last week.
Yeah, we tabled it. We tabled it last week.
Who pulled the table?
It's in the.
Because it was only five people here and I know, I didn't vote on it. I was gonna, I was gonna stay outside of that. So the table can approve, be approved. So it was just read for the first time.
It is correct.
It is correct. I thought so. I just asked.
It just read the first time.
Well, it was on the agenda.
Didn't take a vote. Just read the first time.
It was read at the, at the meeting before last and there was five people absent. There were five.
You had attendance and just read the first time.
It was read.
Yeah, at the last meeting it was read, five yes votes, Mayor McClintock voting yes. To table the ordinance, is what it says.
Okay.
Remember, look at that. I don't remember. Roll the table.
I just underlined it.
Well, it's been read for the first time. You all want to spin the rules and add on the second reading or you want to just come back?
Spin the rules and read it for the second time.
Yeah.
Motion and second for that?
I make the motion.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
An ordinance to establish.
I'm opposed to the second reading. He's still reading it. Yeah, still reading.
An ordinance to establish new compensation for aldermen of the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
It's been read for the second time. It'll be back on the agenda in two weeks, as you all wish. O-three?
An ordinance to amend section five of ordinance twenty-three sixty-one and section one of ordinance twenty-four oh-two regarding the salary for the office of city clerk and to amend the salary for the office of city treasurer for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
I make a motion to suspend those rules and place it on its second reading as we did the other two.
Make it second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance to amend section five of ordinance twenty-three sixty-one and section one of ordinance twenty-four oh-two regarding the salary for the office of city clerk and to amend the salary for the office of city treasurer for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
It's been read for the second time. It'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for the final reading. O-four?
O-four is an ordinance adopting regulations to govern the construction, installation, maintenance, and removal of small wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may, make a motion, spin the rules and place it on the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance adopting regulations to govern the construction, installation, maintenance, and removal of small wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, if we further spin the rules and place it on its third reading?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance adopting regulations to govern the construction, installation, maintenance, and removal of small wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Already heard it read for the third time. I get a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
In the discussion.
Will you please explain to the general audience why this is so important to be read and placed on the emergency clause?
Sure. Um, the federal communications, uh, FCC has established a regulation which, uh, puts a lot of cost and expense on cities, municipalities, other government agencies for the purpose of putting small cell, uh, wireless communication devices in our, on our poles that the city owns and in our rights of way. If we do not have an ordinance or regulations in place by September one of this year, then they will be, I say they, the people who put these entities, who put these small cells in place will be able to place them anywhere they want to without any aesthetic regulation whatsoever. And we need to have regulations in place prior to September first. This was on the agenda at the last meeting. We did not want to put it on the emergency clause at that time. But because we did not have enough people here, we had to put it on the emergency clause this time for it to be law before September first. So, uh, that's why the emergency clause is on this particular ordinance.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? I need to approve that emergency clause.
Emergency clause is, uh, section five.
I get a motion and second to approve, uh, emergency clause, section five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That emergency clause passes as well. What's that ordinance number, Ms. City Clerk?
The ordinance number will be two-five-one-two.
Oh-five?
Oh-five is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of five police vehicles and for other purposes.
Do we spin the rules and read it out for the second time?
Oh-five. Is that your wish, Ms. Harris? I get a second.
Second.
All in favor to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of five police vehicles and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may, the council has approved this expenditure. We've just kind of been waiting to get this finalized. With council permission to spend the rules placing on its third reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of five police vehicles and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. City Clerk, can you get that ordinance a number?
That will be ordinance number two-five-one-three.
Two-five-one-three. What's it? Councilman, pull you. What's that? Another ordinance that you added? Going out. We covered all those and.
Okay.
Yeah, and R-two. We didn't need to do this. We added, yeah, R-two, we added.
Is this on the emergency clause?
No, not cars.
Chief Langston?
Mayor, can I ask Chief Langston to come up, please?
Sure.
Chief, would you explain to the people why we have?
On the cars.
Third reading because, well, approve it because.
Yes, sir. Uh, the cars we, we've been purchasing out of Little Rock. They come with the whole package except for our radios. If we have any kind of maintenance on those cars, we have to drive them back to Little Rock, which means two officers going back to Little Rock with two cars, drop it off for a week and come back and get it. So we have a new company in Memphis that does that now, twenty minutes away, so it makes much easier.
That's all. You need to explain why we, why we get it right now. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, before we leave new business and go into commission request, at the last council meetings, R-two was read by title only, but unfortunately we did have a motion and second to do that. So I was wanting to go back and make a motion to read R-two by title only.
Councilman, pull you.
From the July eighteenth agenda.
Yeah. Councilman, pull you. You forgot that with R-two last week?
Oh, man.
Okay, the second, then read by title only. Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Instead of turning to R-two from last week.
Right, this is R-two from the July eighteenth meeting. A resolution approving the selection of an architectural firm to provide design services required to prepare plans, specifications, and bid documents to assist with the proposed remodeling and to provide typical construction administrative services for Hightower Park, for Berta Jackson Center, Hightower Project, and for other purposes.
Get a motion and second to. In discussion. I get a second.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye? Opposed? Can we get a, a resolution number for R-two?
Resolution number twenty-two-oh-seven.
Twenty-two-oh-seven.
Yeah, I think we did. I think we probably gave it a number last. We was giving a number two weeks ago.
What was it?
Yeah, we got the number.
Yeah, so I think we said the same number.
Twenty-two-oh-four?
Yeah, we did the same issue.
Permission request, uh, permission to distribute the funds from Southland, but I know it's a conversation in, uh, pre-council. You all wish to table it or go ahead?
Mayor, what was on the, two weeks ago was, was the, the, was Delta, or the, uh, security days, or disaster relief days. Disaster funds that's available.
Okay.
That was, you're available two, two weeks ago that we didn't know.
Okay. How do you all want to distribute the disaster day? Give me that number. How much money was it?
Twelve thousand, eight hundred, sixty-five dollars, twenty-six cents. The total, the, the, what was the discussion two weeks ago was seventy, thirty, seventy to the Good Neighbor Center and thirty to the Delta Neighborhood Action Council, but it wasn't enough to get, to prove that. So that was the discussion two weeks ago.
Will you say those names again?
I'm sorry.
Will you say the names again that we're distributing this money to?
The amount?
I think you said the names incorrectly. I just want to hear it again, just to be sure.
Twelve thousand, eight hundred, sixty-five dollars, twenty-six cents.
Distributed?
Seventy percent to the Good Neighbor Center and thirty percent to Delta Neighborhood Action Council. That's, that's what the discussion was two weeks ago.
What are y'all wishes?
Motion to approve this submitted.
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
abstaining. As all the council are part of one of the committees, that's why I'm abstaining. I belong to one of these organizations.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
He stepped out.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Abstaining.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Eight, yes, one abstention and Counselor Monday stepped out for, so it will pass. Uh, I need permission to sign a contract requiring the flow-up of the renovation of the Roberto Jackson neighborhood.
So moved. Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, I got that permission.
Mayor, if I may, back under mission request.
Okay.
At our last council meeting, uh, concerning the contract with the library, four point five million.
Yes.
There was a motion to amend the language, but never a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion. We approved that as submitted and amended.
A second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do we, do we understand? Opposed? Alright.
Well, I just, I wanted to know, uh, the, the amendment had to do with the, uh, redirecting of funds, is that how?
No, the name. No, the name, the contractor. Originally, we had, uh, Allen and Hollis.
Hollis.
Yeah, and it's been Barnes and House.
Okay.
Barnes and Ross.
Just the name.
Barnes and Ross, yeah.
Alright. Counselor Monday, did the police, yeah, report for police.
No, we haven't had.
Counselor Holt, pause. Counselor Crum, airport.
Yes, just a second, ready for that. Too much paperwork. I know it is.
If you want to skip, I'll go to someone else real quick.
Counselor Hutchinson, uh, personnel. Counselor Woman Robinson, Public Works.
Right, Public Works had a special call meeting Wednesday, July twenty-fourth. Mayor McClintock, uh, requested the meeting to present a proposal for the, I think it's called, um, Creating a Clean City, Operation Clean City. And that was a really good proposal. I'm sure it's been all over the news and everywhere. He has outlined that each ward, this is for trash pickup, that each ward is picked up per day. We have five days a week. We have five wards. We will start in Ward one on Monday, Ward two on Tuesdays, Ward three on Wednesdays, four on Thursdays, and concluding with Ward five on Fridays. And I think that's going to be a really wonderful thing to do. Of course, the Public Works Commission did accept that proposal wholeheartedly. The second thing that we're, that we discussed in that meeting was the curbside garbage containers. I think Mayor McClintock has gotten with our city treasurer and they've come up with a plan to get the money from capital outlay. It's going to be like two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars or six-thousand-five-hundred, hundred garbage carts. And this funding probably will not be available until the ending of the year or the first of next year. So we can go ahead and, and do what we promised to our citizens that we're going to do, invest in them, uh, these garbage carts, uh, for their yards. So I think that was basically all we discussed. Very productive meeting. We accomplished a lot. Thank you, Mayor McClintock.
Counselor McCatt, budget?
Yes, sir. We met and, of course, presentations been made for the councils today that you approved and amended. And we thank you. We will meet again the fourth Thursday of August with updated information from HR. And we will continue this process until we get everything out of it and de-crossed. Thank you, thank you for your support.
Far?
No, sir, we're going to meet right after this meeting.
Councilman Pulliam, you too.
Uh. Each one of you have a copy of the reports, so I gave each councilman, also a copy.
Councilman Willis, Chamber. Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Murray. Also, can you all please make sure, you make sure the city clerks get all your reports in writing?
Mayor, I've, uh, located the report for the airport commission meeting.
Okay. Counselor Crum?
Basically, the airport clean, uh, the runway cleaning had been completed. The remarking was to begin. Now, this, we met back on July eighteenth, so it would have been the next week after that. And we're required the runway to be closed for approximately two days. And the commission agreed to offer a five-year lease to McNeeley Air on hangar number one. That concludes my report.
Alright. I didn't overlook any council person's report. And there were no appointments, any announcements?
Yes, I want to make one, uh, I want to make one to the police department. I've been for about four years now. I've been on the police commission. And I've been chairman for about three years. And I, uh, tried to do everything that, that I could and the commission helped to get everything that they need and work with them as well, as well as we can with the police department. We, 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 everything that they need, if they brought it to us, we've got to do it. And, and they do a good job for us and we appreciate them. And we were losing so many officers that we knew we had to get some raises in place for them. And the same thing with the fire department. I'm not on that commission, but I, I know the same thing was happening. We want everyone to get a good raise, a good, a good raise. The bonuses that we give every year was okay, but they, they needed raises. And, and we appreciate y'all to the highest and thank y'all for y'all's services.
And can I piggyback on something? As well, and, um, which I brought up due to time. Matter of fact, I think I'm talking to Mr. Martin. Might have to turn him up for sure. You know, our captain and above the police department, they're not able to, I guess, they say it's not worth, uh, they're not able to get overtime. I know per se with the city. But I think it's something that we should look at and I gave everybody a copy of the, uh, of, of the contract that we're supposed to have. I don't, I never saw a contract, but I like to see the contract that we have when we doing business. I'm just saying, like with Southland, I think, I know we had one with school, but I'm just saying with Southland. I like to see it because I think it's just so unfair. If they want to work off duty, they should be able to work off duty. And that's something that I've been looking into and I gave each one of you a copy. And that, uh, one particular agreement that we're supposed to have with Southland, I just like to see it because, um, it said, according to the municipal league, as long as we enter into an agreement, they're saying it's okay for them to work off, off duty, then they should be able to do that. So I'm just hoping that we can look into it a little bit further and make sure that this is something they can do. Because I remember when we went to the part about the salary, because I was on the police commission at the time when they, uh, went to that. You know what I'm just saying, making captains and above salary. But I think that they still should be able to work off time, you know, because especially when they're not working for us, that's when they don't get the overtime.
Let me just add this. I, I agree, but, um, as mayor, I hate to see my chief. I, I, I hope that we can get enough money to pay them what they need, but I hate to see my chief working their beats out part-time.
I mean, but, but that's a choice.
I understand.
I've known assistant chiefs and everybody else that works off time, you know? Even when I was in the law enforcement, they did the same thing. So the sheriff used to work over at Southland back in the day when they had the county club going. So, I mean, I'm just saying, so what's the difference?
I have two announcements, uh, on this, the seventeenth annual citizens, uh, let me say this again. Seventeenth annual senior citizens day program is going to be a theme. Let the Good Times Roll will be Wednesday, the seventh, two thousand nineteen, from ten AM to three-thirty PM at the U G Wood Civic Center headed by Mr. Maurice Blair. Also, there's a back-to-school rally, uh, from ten to three Saturday. Also, there's a back-to-school rally, uh, from ten to three Saturday, next Saturday, at Mount Olive and the Wonder City Boys Club. We had two people that signed up as citizens, if there's all the announcements, then we'll have another announcement. We had two individuals that signed up as citizen requests, uh, I think one would not be speaking, she's gonna come back and wanna speak with the council in a, in a private session. And, uh, we have Mr. James Stokes from Mount Cabaret Church, is he here, sir? Will you please come up, give your name, address, and we allow five minutes?
James Stokes came to West Memphis nineteen forty-nine, and lived twenty-fourteen East Jackson, and Mount Cabaret Church, uh, has always had a bylaw, reasoning. We got that copy here, here, and what I wanna say upfront, that the Police Department here in West Memphis always interfered with Mount Cabaret, never treated us like we was citizen of Mount Cabaret, of West Memphis. They come in, they talk to the Deacon Board and the Trustee Board, built that beautiful church over there, twenty-fourteen, oh, not, uh, thirty, uh, twenty, twenty-one oh-one East Jackson. We built that by hand, me and that man there, running up and down, cutting the bank, and I also got papers for, only on his one from West Memphis to Little Rock, got a name sign on anything. And why you come in there as a police and, and not recognize the leadership of the church? See, we are the leaders, whether you wanna appreciate that or not, and, uh, on, uh, November, the, uh, November nineteen, uh, two thousand one, I think it was, and, uh, we, uh, had a, can't bear me. Things are gonna get old and contrary. Okay, this says here, I'm gonna read, read this here, well, Gary Hill, appointed trustees. Mount Cabaret never appointed trustee, but Gary Hill wrote this letter to John Coate, the president of Union Planters at that time, okay? It says, uh, we, uh, we either pastor, uh, of Mount Cabaret, appointed, uh, trustee, uh, Terry Lawson, Clarice Williams, and, uh, Herman Dawson. And, uh, we, 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 we never appointed anything, we always voted, and they says, he says here that they, uh, dismissed me by, uh, forty-three to sixteen, the forty-three was my number, the sixteen was the Deacon's number. And, uh, but everybody that went with, uh, all, all the city officials I talked to, they would say, uh, well, they voted you out. They voted me out, yes, they voted me out, but it wouldn't, wasn't a fair vote. And, uh, John, uh, John Coate told, uh, told the pastor, and, and I got people to verify this, uh, they told him, just bring him a, just bring him a, 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 a fake paper, and he would handle it from there. And, 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 and if you can see that, uh, this had to be fake, because there's no way forty-three members could vote for the Deacons, and all they ever done was stole money when, when they was in charge.
Stokes, tell us how, how?
Let, let me just say something here.
How can we help you?
This should be directed to the city attorney, because this is nothing that we need to be in the midst of, so, city attorney, if, if, Mr. Stokes, if you don't mind.
That's what we kinda understand.
Can you, uh, talk with the city attorney and the mayor, maybe they could help you?
I sure would.
And, 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 you know, go in the right direction.
Okay.
And we weren't, Mr. Stokes, we were not interrupting you, you deserved to speak, you have deserved an opportunity to speak today. We just wanted to make sure that you were speaking to the right individual.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for hearing me.
If there's nothing else, can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
To dismiss. All the paper, aye?
Aye.